I know, regular city council meeting. Before the meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, staff and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host a city council regular meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear a council member speaking. Please use raise hand to be recognized by the mayor and enabled to speak to the council. To comment under oral communication or on any agenda item, you are allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to 350 words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set to adhere to typical three-minute time allowance. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand option to comment. Participants calling in from a telephone will only be able to listen and cannot provide feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are all not in the same room, all votes at this meeting will be taken by roll call.
Thank you. The regular meeting of the Monte Sereno City Council for Tuesday, March 2nd, 2021 is called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Councilmember Mekachak?
Present.
Councilmember Turner? I'm sorry, Councilmember Lawler?
Present.
Mayor Protemphalahi?
Present.
And Mayor Luthold?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, so are there any proposed changes to orders of the day, Ms. Radcliffe for Mr. Leon Artis?
None on my end.
None. Okay, thank you. Then let's go ahead and move directly to our first presentation. If the West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority is available, let's make sure we promote them to presenters. And Mr. Leon Artis, did you want to take care of the introductions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We are proud this evening to have a presentation from Ms. Marva Shehan from the West Valley Collection and Recycling. She'll be here to talk about 1383 and the requirements that the state of California is mandating on our residents for that law. So with no further ado, I will have Shehan take over.
Perfect, thank you. So I will be sharing. Okay, so I guess question, do I share my screen or am I just have control over that screen?
Hi, this is Michelle. You are sharing your screen.
Sure, okay, sorry, okay. Just a moment. I thought it was the other way around, but I can. Okay.
Maybe while you're doing that, I'll just say that I'm the Monte Sereno representative on the West Valley Solid Waste Management Authority. And just, I'm pleased that you're able to come and do a presentation tonight.
Well, great, thank you so much. Okay, can everybody see the presentation at this point? Yes, perfect, thank you. Again, thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to come and speak to you this evening. Tonight, we want to talk to you about 1383 and how that's going to impact Monta Serrano. And again, Marva Shehan, I'm the executive director for the Solid Waste Authority. So the impetus of 1383 was really focusing on organic waste, and it is the largest waste stream in California. And when you look at organics in terms of SB 1383, it is basically any item that was a living thing, so organics, paper, lumber is all part of the organic stream that they are considering. They're focusing on organics keeping it out of the landfill as well as we're going to hear some on edible food recovery in order to get food out to those who need it. So the focus is on the targets, the short-lived climate pollutants, of which methane is the one that we're focusing on because organics going into the landfill create the methane. And their plan was, the statewide goal was to reduce the organic waste going to the landfill by 50% by 2020. They did not achieve that goal, but they have still left the 75% goal for 2025. And they've added through this regulation a 20% reduction of organics that is going towards edible food recovery. So in AB 939, if for those of you that remember what that rule or law that came in really told the states or the cities that you needed to reduce your recycled materials going to landfill by 50%. We don't care how you do it, just do it. And agencies all came up with their plan, as did Monta Serrano. 1383 is very prescriptive. While the state goal is 75%, that is not placed on individual agencies. Instead, they've given you very specific requirements that you must do. So we have to provide the organics collection to residents. We have to provide this edible food recovery program, education, procure recyclable materials because we're going to be having this, we got to create this market, capacity for processing. And we just signed a new agreement with Waste Management to secure that processing. And then ordinances and monitoring and compliance. So that's all on the agencies. So in terms of collection, what's going to change for your residents in Monta Serrano is they're going to start putting food scraps into their organics container. That's the biggest change that they're going to see, and that means it can't go into your garbage. It needs to go into the green waste where your green trimmings and lawn trimmings and things go. We will be distributing food pails similar to the one that's shown there in the picture so that they can put them in a kitchen and take them out. They're able to use the compostable, there's a certain grade of a plastic bag that they can line it with or they can line it with newspaper to take it and put it out into the can. Additionally, they're very prescriptive. The colors of the containers have to be green for organics, blue for recycling, and a shade of gray or black for the garbage side. For us, we're going to need to change our garbage container, and that's something we're currently working with WV CNR that they'll start replacing with the proper containers. We don't have to have them fully changed out till 2036. So there's a lot of inspection and enforcement that has to occur. Because you have minimal commercial, there's going just to be some route reviews where there will actually be lid flipping of going down routes and doing inspections to make sure that people are not contaminating any of the streams, that the right things are going into the right containers. And the authority is here to help. And so one of the things we'll be doing is working with all four member agencies and coming up with the audits and working with the hauling company with WV CNR to get all of this done. And then starting, you have a couple of years to get everything working. And then per the regulations, we're supposed to issue notices of violation. But we have that couple of years to get everybody in line. The edible food, I'll spend just a little bit of time on it. It's really, they've divided it in tier one, tier two. You don't have either one of them in Monta Serrano, but your neighboring jurisdiction, so Los Gatos with the Safeway or with anybody that has a Whole Foods, Trader Joe's, those are the tier one. And they're going to have to come up with a program where any food that is still edible gets taken to a food bank and properly distributed. The good news is that most within our four agency area are those companies, and they're going to be doing that statewide. So we'll be working with local management, Safeway Corporate, all of those will be understanding and knowing that's what they have to do. Again, you don't have to worry about this piece of it, except for the only thing we'll need to do is on the Monte Sereno website is to put where you can go to get, basically putting the food banks and food places onto your website so people know where to get it. But we will have an education outreach component. And as we're educating people on moving from their food scraps from the garbage and getting past the yuck factor, which is tends to be what most people first think of, and getting that material into the proper carts, talking about what we can be doing, ways of reducing it, and also just the why of why we're doing this at all. So the other piece that will apply to you is that beginning in January, there's a procurement requirement, and I have it here based on employees, it's actually based on population. There's a certain amount of mulch or compost that the city will need to purchase. The good news to that, this is the only place in SB 1383 where they allow you to use a good faith effort. So as long as we have the plans in place, we've talked with Public Works, everybody knows that this is what we need to be doing. We will not have to create a new mountain of compost and mulch within the city. The amount of material, that is probably one of the biggest challenges we have is what to do with this required procurement material. Then also we'll need to make sure that all of your paper products are of a certain level of recyclable material. Historically, we think mainly of copy paper, but it's anything, so it's paper and paper-related products. So any type of brochures, anything that is printed for the city will need to be on recyclable materials. And we have to keep track of all of that information. And so we're working right now with city staff on developing an ordinance. There's CalRecycle, and our firm actually helped them devise a model ordinance. And that all of these items have to be included in an ordinance or in correspondence with an existing ordinance. You could already have a CalGreen requirement in your ordinance for building and construction. We just need to make sure that the standards in SB 1383 are in your current ordinance or revise accordingly. And our hope is to get this ordinance to you in the middle of the year towards second, third quarter to get that passed. So it'll be in effect in January. There's a significant amount of record-keeping requirement that is required by each agency. And right now, we prepare on your behalf, we, the authority, on your behalf, your AB 939 annual report, where they're going to do a similar report for SB 1383. So we have to keep track of all of this information. But again, the authority will come and will help and assist your city staff in preparing those reports. There will be penalties. They have put in there that CalRecycle has the ability to issue penalties for agencies that are not in compliance and haven't done and put in the ordinances, et cetera. They're there. Whether they are going to actually implement them and do them remains to be seen, but they are part of the legislation. So how is it funded? Yes, this is another one of those unfunded state mandates coming from Sacramento. So we're looking at going through the rates, we'll probably, it ends up coming. The processing charge, once we put food scraps into your green waste, it doubled the cost to process the material. And so that in itself, because there's more possibilities for contamination, et cetera, and the market for that material is not as strong as it is for just the green waste, which goes into the mulch and your compost. And so we are looking probably, because this is going to be phased in over, it goes into effect January 1st, which is halfway through our rate year. We're looking at probably somewhere into the $2 to $3 a month for most of your residents in this fiscal year, and then July 2022, another $1 to $2, once we have the full year in. The focus, the most of the increase this year is coming into, we have more outreach and the purchase of the kitchen pails and some upfront costs, and then just the completion of it in the following year. We're still working with WV CNR, we're still working on hammering and really getting those costs down. And we will be going in May to the board meeting to set those or ratify those rates. So now we're in the process of negotiating a memo with WV CNR. Again, the authority holds that collection agreement, of which the four member agencies are part of that. But we're in the process of amendment to get them to perform the services that we need them to do to be in compliance. We'll be modifying the ordinances, we'll be working with the city on figuring out your procurement plan and then the rate setting side. And we're wanting to get ready to start getting out to the public so that we can have plenty of time to get their knowledge of what's coming before they actually see any type of an increase on their monthly or their quarterly garbage bill. And that is my presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember questions, comments? Ms. Lawler?
Yes, thank you for that presentation. I'm really excited about moving forward with this. And my question is regarding education and outreach. Will the authority provide jurisdictions with media toolkits to post on their websites and through their social media accounts? Great.
Absolutely. And one of the things we want to make sure we're doing is that we have consistent messaging between Monta Serrano and Los Gatos and because they're all crossover so much that everybody is hearing the same message and getting the same information.
Great, thank you.
Great, Mr. Mekachak?
I think there's an opportunity for Youth Commission to be involved in some of this education and outreach. And I mentioned that at the board meeting. And fortunately, Monte Sereno is very simple with no commercial. So a lot of the onerous components of this don't really apply to us. And then my other sort of comment is, we should maybe have something in the newsletter on this at some point in time. But I thought it was important for our residents to hear that there's going to be an increase in their rates and why that increase is going to occur. Because if I know the citizens of Monte Sereno, when they see something, I don't want it to be a surprise to them. So thank you very much for the presentation.
Great, and Councilmember Alahi?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. Could you clarify what all is included in organics? Are we talking about just fruits and vegetables or are we talking about cooked food also?
Everything, so meat, dairy, cheese, as well as the vegetables and bread, anything, any edible food or table scraps, anything can go into your organics container. This is a much broader, when a lot of these programs first came out, it was just vegetables and fruits and vegetables. But this is meat, dairy as well.
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking at the chicken curry after it's made going into the garbage pail. I don't know, that's helpful to recycle or not, so.
Well, once it goes through the process, that curry must just help those things break down.
All right, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Lawler?
Well, just to be clear, what's also can be added to those bins or any kind of compostable? Spoons, cups, et cetera, that are made out of, no? No compostable?
No, no, because that's one of those industry's misnomers. It's that while they are called compostable, they do not break down in the process that most facilities, processing facilities do. So we'll be able to do things like your paper plates, paper cups. But anything that, if you ever try to take one of those compostable spoons, put it in hot water in your microwave, the thing doesn't change. It's a, so no in that part of it. But like I said, anything that, so paper straws, you know, if you can get back into the paper world, your pizza boxes, which we've been doing, but anything in that paper, absolutely.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, and that's part of the education that we will get out for sure.
Back to Councilmember Alahi. Your hand was up, but that's okay. And so I wanted to be clear, this is not begun yet. And this is going to be implemented in the near future, is that correct?
Correct. It'll go into effect, the law goes into, or the regulations go into effect January 1st, 2022. We will start, we want to get the information out. We will start rolling the program out and probably towards the end of what I call Q3. In the September, October, we got to get all the pails out so that it's in full implementation in January.
And you're going to be able to handle, I mean, or West Valley Collection is going to be able to handle if people start doing this early, as soon as stuff is distributed or?
Yes. Yes, and that's, we've worked with Waste Management to make sure that this early implementation is fine, and they have said that, yes.
All right, great.
Yeah.
And now Mayor Protemphalahi has his hand up again.
Yeah, so just to be clear, did you mention pizza boxes were okay now to throw in the organic bin? Or do we need to wait until January?
Yes, once.
What about the other stuff? Do we need to wait, January 1st, 22nd to throw organics?
Yes, we need to wait, we need to wait until we kind of roll it out. Once we've delivered the food pails and get that information out. I know there's going to be leakage, that people are going to jump the gun, but we don't want it 100% happening right out the get-go. Right now, pizza boxes are fine. We've been putting pizza boxes in for quite a while, so you can do that. But as far as the rest of your kitchen scraps, we need to wait until the pails are out, and we have people educated so that they don't think that, oh, because, you know, similar to what Councilmember Lawler said, because it says compostable on the packaging, that therefore I must be able to put it in. We need to get the education out first before we get people actually doing it.
Thank you.
Great, so it sounds like critical path is until somebody gives you a pail, don't do it.
Yes, that's excellent.
All right, good, that's messaging we can understand. Okay, if we don't have any further questions, thank you very much for coming and presenting this to us. And we really appreciate the presentation as well as the efforts to get this in place. This is something we know everybody's been looking forward to.
Well, if anybody has any questions, the city manager, Mr. Leon Artis, has my information as well.
Great, thank you very much.
Uh huh, thank you.
All right, so moving next to oral communications. This is the time for members of the public to speak briefly about subjects which are not on the calendar. So if we have any members of the public who are wishing to speak on matters which are not on the calendar, please raise your hand, and we will look to recognize you. All right, seeing none, we will then close oral communications.
There is a hand raised, Mike McNally.
Oh, there we go. Okay, Mike McNally, great, glad you noticed. So thank you. Mike McNally, please speak when you are ready. You'll have three minutes.
Sure, can you guys hear me? I hope so. Yep. I just wanted to talk about the, it's my understanding that there will be a discussion about wall height restrictions and limitations with new and existing construction tonight. I think that's on the agenda, and if it is, I'll wait until that time to talk. I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss the opportunity.
Yes, that is on the agenda and will be coming up. And let's see, that's item two of unfinished public hearings, which we will.
Then I will, I will close my mouth and mute my speaker and wait patiently.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak on matters not on the agenda tonight, please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, then we will now close oral communications and move to written communications. Ms. Radcliffe, any written communications which did not make it into the agenda packet?
No, there is not.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving now to the consent calendar. Do, if members of the council have brief questions that can be answered by staff without pulling a matter, we can do that. If you feel there is a need to pull a matter for full-scale discussion, then we can pull that and act on the rest of the consent calendar. Council, Mayor Protemphalahi?
Thank you, yeah, just one brief comment on the minutes for February 16th. There's a presentation where the 2020 Synopsis Championship Saisfer winners were recognized. I would request that the names of those winners be inserted in those minutes so that they become part of the record. I think it's important for if you're recognizing something, they should actually go on the written record also. And then I'm also requesting these items. 10.
Item seven.
Item seven to report.
Okay, great, thank you. Excellent idea to include those names. I think the city clerk can go ahead and insert those in the minutes. Let's go ahead and pull item seven, which is regarding the Monte Sereno Emergency Action Plan. And so do we have anyone else with comments or questions or a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
Motion to approve.
Okay, and a second by Councilmember Lawler. Roll call, please.
Right, and just to be clear, you're adopting everything except item seven?
That's correct, items one through six on the consent calendar.
Councilmember Mekachak?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Protemphalahi?
Yes.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
That motion passes five zero.
All right, so let's go ahead and proceed to the item seven. Mayor Protemphalahi, you had questions, concerns, comments about that, and go ahead and.
Yeah, thank you so much. I think when we look at this emergency operational plan, I think it's been based on the way plans were operating through the years. I don't know if it sufficiently takes into account the pandemic and the influence it has on it. And I don't think it sufficiently takes into account the Reno requirements that require us to build, that may require us to build 100 or 200 more units. And I don't think the plan considers everything else that may come into account because of that. So some preliminary things is, and then there's a schedule, I believe, on page 60, let me go, it's page 73, on the different assessments that have been made on the things that are hazards that are likely to occur. This is a hazard analysis. And I looked at the fire analysis, and it says likelihood sometimes. And the severity was expected to be low or severely or moderate. So I don't know if that is the correct conclusion to come to at this age and time, especially if you think about 200 units are going to be put up, 200, which is almost 10% of our population. And I don't know where they're going to go, but I suspect a lot of them are going to go in areas where there are a lot of trees and severe fire hazards. So I think this needs to be looked at, we need to evaluate it based on not what we have today, as anyone just the operation plan. But because it'll also help us decide how far we can implement the Reno numbers and also it'll help us decide how vigorously we need to oppose it because it's going to be threatening to our city. Not just because these houses are going to be like, hopefully not like paradise, but they're going to be situated where they pose a danger to the people who reside there and to the rest of the city. And there's the whole issue of evacuations, and there'll be enough evacuation that's going to be done. So I suspect at least that one item, the fire hazard analysis, needs to be reviewed. Now, I understand the Monte Sereno is responsible to doing that with the fire department. And I'm not, I'm not clear on how much input we were able to give the fire department on this plan as to what is going on. So really, we need to look at all that, this plan based on what is going to be happening. Consider the pandemic effect and consider the Reno numbers and how the city is going to be doing. Those are my big items. Those are my big, big items. And then they had some small, a few other comments. The earthquake is, analysis has been done, and according to the report, there's a history of a 7.0 earthquake on an approximately 140-year cycle. And the last 140-year cycle apparently it says was 1868, which means we should have had a big one in 2008. So that should also go into the picture. And if you can. The other thing on the analysis thing, I, it in, on page 73 basically said hazmat is not an issue. I'm sorry, on page 16, when it does the analysis, it says there are no businesses in Montecito that manufacture products that pose a hazardous materials risk. But yet on page 73, the hazmat is considered a risk, almost like the fire risk. So if there's no material risk, then that chart needs to be updated or clarified as to why we're saying there is a hazmat risk, but there isn't. On page 77, they talk about mitigation. In 2012, Montesino completed the local hazard mitigation plan, which serves in an excellent, that was in 2012, this is 10 years later, and that's why I think it's important that we take a look at it and see if that plan is still up to date or not. The, and the preparedness, it's talking about the staff and employee being trained to handle these emergencies. I'd like to get an update on that, whether you've been able to do that or what we need to do on that. There's a city emergency organization, the, obviously the city manager is in charge, but there's supposed to be a succession in place. Now, we're a small organization. If you can help us, if you let us know who else is second in charge, or we'll step up into the shoes. And then really the fire hazardous things. Training actually goes beyond, there's supposed to be FEMA training and city training and city training, so there's a bunch of training that needs to be implemented. And they're supposed to be cross jurisdictional preparedness action. So probably a few more details from the city of Montesino as to, you know, what exactly has been taken, because I mean, we're really talking about, I'm looking at it as a serious fire plan, which hopefully will never happen, but if it does happen, we need to be fully prepared for that. There's also coverage through a TV channel, which you might note that Kcat is one of the radio stations that is going to be looking at providing coverage in case of a fire hazard and danger. When they noted was on page 4, there's the address of the Los Gares Police Department, which I think is the old address. They're not at 15,300 anymore. I think they're at 15,900. Also, the address of the Dave's Elementary School seems to be wrong. It's not 17779, it's 17770. Communications, there's a chapter on communication that doesn't mention cell phones. So we probably need to update that and provide a cellphone contact where people can also call. I think still talking about radio contacts and walkie-talkies. But cellphone may still work or it may not work, at least it should be available. There's also on page 27, it talks about a web EOC, which is supposed to be an emergency management software tool used by all of the Santa Clara County official area. And I need some more information on, you know, what the website is, whether we are part of that or how do we access that. Those are some of my comments. I don't know if the city's manager could address some of that and see if he can redo this provisions. And especially have, you know, have one of the priorities and make, when this plan is made, to look at the requirements or on how many houses are going to be built, where they're going to be built, and what kind of additional dangers that causes, that causes, and what kind of mitigation we need to do. And I think overall that will also help us in our concern that we'll address as to why it's the, you know, what they're imposing on us as far as housing and requiring us to rezone is inappropriate for us. Thank you, that's all I have for now.
Great, thank you. I know that when I saw this plan, my first thought was of Ms. Turner and all of the work she's done on emergency preparedness, and I wanted to ask, Ms. Turner, your level of satisfaction with the plan, your thoughts on what Councilmember Lawhi has said and ideas about going forward.
Yeah. Yes, I think, I think we need to, to, to look at this. To be honest, we haven't had the time to actually review this in detail. So we need, we need to go over it and to make sure that it's actually updated.
All right, great, thank you. Any, yeah, Councilmember Mekachak?
Um, perhaps if if we don't need to accept this today, then what we could do is, I believe that Councilmember Turner and I are on the wildfire safety ad hoc committee, although I may be wrong, and that we actually go through and put that into perspective and review it from that ad hoc committee's perspective.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to, to take a look, again, based on your eyes on it, Councilmember Turner's experience with this. I think those are, those are, that would be a good start. We obviously, unless the city manager tells us that there's some sort of an actual deadline on this. I know it's a lot of work, it's a big project. But if it's going to be done once every 10 or 12 years, it does seem like trying to future-proof it as best we can since we picked it up, and before we put it down, we should probably do the best we can. So city manager, your thoughts on what's going on in our deadlines and timelines?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There is no deadline. I brought this forward when I came on board. I noticed it has not been updated since 2014, and I thought, what a great opportunity to get a first pass at this. So thank you for the feedback this evening from all the council members. And I like what Councilmember Mekachak said, perhaps to approach some of the fire stuff. Maybe we can have the ad hoc committee take a look at that. Our primary objective this evening was to at least make sure that the phone numbers and all the links had worked. And I'm almost certain that when this initial plan was put together, a consultant was hired to help assist putting the plan together. So we will look into that as well as far, you know, to address some of the items that Mayor Potemalahi mentioned about specific updates to specific things. We are working on our general plan update, and we are working on our housing element update, and our Reno numbers are not final yet. I don't know if that is, this is the proper form to address those specifics, but it certainly is the proper form to address fire safety and what we do for our residents when we have a wildfire. And what is our plan to help keep them safe in such an event? We're talking about natural disasters like the one we are in now, the pandemic, and how do we continue to operate and serve the people during those times and get them the information they need. So those are the, you know, there was mention of an earthquake that could, you know, require some looking into. But we'll definitely take a deeper dive into this. I'm glad that we had this discussion. This is again, just the first pass. There is no deadline, and we will be, I hope, working with the ad hoc committee and perhaps an outside agency to bring this back at a future time. Thank you for your feedback.
Great, thank you. And yeah, as we talk, obviously, since we're here, and this is a little bit of a segue into the fire committee and, and how it relates to this. I know that kind of as a resident, the thing that I want to know is, what should I do? And it would be best to know that in advance. I know that the, a lot of that education is available to people at the picnic. That's a great forum for getting it out. We haven't had that in a long time. But making sure that new residents know what the rules are, where the shelter in place is if we get trapped in the city. Probably Dave's Elementary, letting people know that that's an emergency location, so that new residents and old are reminded of that. And so we may want to make some efforts on that to educate as we go into this. Yes, Councilmember Lawler?
Really quickly, I want to know if, this is a question from Mr. Leonartis. I know that the city has access to SCC Alert and using that as a way to contact residents, but I'm wondering if it might be worthwhile for us to think about develop, having our own emergency alert app strictly for our city. I don't know if that's something that would help with that communication piece that you're talking about.
Thank you, Councilmember Lawler. I have looked into a service that is tailored towards individual cities. And I looked at that on a couple of occasions, was in communication recently with the vendor providing that service. And what I thought about was the SCC Alert would be, it might add a link to the chain, they might access that app, which might in turn put them into SCC Alert. So I guess we can look at that with a deeper dive and evaluation on that. But my thoughts were making more people aware of SCC Alert. That is the information directly from the county. That is our direct link to our fire, our police services, everybody who is going to help us in the event of an emergency as opposed to potentially an additional link that would just put you towards those services after. So, but I could take another look at that. I think the biggest struggle for Montesino is just getting the word out there. I don't want to get too off topic here, but there was discussion at our last meeting about survey and a database and those kind of things. And I've been thinking about dividing the city into five pieces, and perhaps myself along with a council member, we can go knock on everybody's door and and ask them, would you be willing to be on our emergency alert list? And we would like to get your phone number and your email address. Now, obviously, some people may not be willing to give that up. But if we were able to get the data for each and every household like that, I think we would be able to really facilitate safety in the event of a disaster or wildfire and such. So just an idea I had, and perhaps we can develop that further. I was thinking of discussing that more at our strategic goals, which is coming up May 4.
Great. Councilmember Turner?
Yes, we have a Montesino resident who is actually the leader of the emergency plan. His name is Patrick Dirks. I would suggest that you contact him as well before, before you start anything. Just to make sure that we're all in agreement here as to how we're going to proceed in the event of a fire. Because you don't want several points of contact, and then citizens won't know who to follow.
Thank you.
Great, sounds good. So I think we have a consensus to go ahead and pull the emergency plan from the calendar for now, and to continue work on it. We've heard from the city manager, there's a lot of busyness with a lot of other projects as well. So we're going to need the help of the ad hoc committee to, to help move this one forward. So appreciate any efforts you all can make on that. And if we need further ad hoc input, then please speak up when the time comes. So, all right, so let's go ahead and close that topic and move on to our public hearings. We have unfinished business. And our first matter is to consider and adopt a resolution expressing support for actions to further strengthen local democracy, authority, and control as related to local zoning and housing issues. There is a staff report on this, so let's go ahead and hear from staff, and we'll open it up to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. So, little background information, at the February 16th meeting, the city council adopted Resolution 21-3802, opposing the enactment of Senate Bill 9, and Resolution 21-3803, opposing the enactment of Senate Bill 10. The city council also directed staff to draft a resolution expressing support for actions to strengthen local control related to local zoning and housing laws and issues. And we have a copy of the resolution attached to the staff report, based on the feedback we received at the last meeting. And this concludes the report from staff. I'm open for questions.
Great, thank you. And while we queue up questions before we get to a full council member discussion, if there are any members of the public wishing to speak on this matter, please raise your hands, and we'll get you queued up to talk about this agenda item. Meanwhile, any questions of council? Seeing no questions, looking at the attendees, I am not seeing any hands up, so I will open public discussion formally. Seeing no hands, I will close public discussion and turn now to council member discussion or comments and/or a motion on this issue. Anyone? Okay, we've got councilman, Mayor Potemalahi's hand went up.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate all the work that's gone into it and the resolution itself. I thought one additional whereas might be helpful, which squarely says why City Montesino is different. And again, I would go back to our concern about the fire safety and all that. And if you can draft a whereas that says that local jurisdictions are best able to handle the continuing dangers posed by fire or earthquakes, especially in a city of Montesino, which is surrounded by trees and the expanded number of units that are required to be placed in such jurisdictions inappropriate, and only local council can make the best decision, and they should be the ones that, who should be deciding. Perhaps our attorney, Sergio Rudin, can help us in, add that one whereas in there, I think it'll help us with the resolution itself.
Great, thank you. And I believe Councilmember Mekachak, you were raising your hand earlier?
Yes, I was before I heard what Mayor Potemalahi said. And I think that that is a very good idea, and adding that whereas and referring to the threats here are is a good idea. And if we could make that amendment before passing the resolution, I think that would be good.
Okay, anyone else wishing to comment? Councilmember Turner?
Yes, I just wanted to be sure that all our resolutions get mailed in as soon as possible. SB 9 seems to be being pushed by Senator Atkins, and they're probably going to decide on SB 9, March 18. So we need to have all the resolutions to Evan Low and to David Cortesi, as well as to to our senators. So March, please do it as soon as possible. If we, if we don't until our next meeting, which is on the 16th, right?
Yeah, the result, Councilmember Turner, this is Michelle. The resolutions for SB 9 and SB 10 were mailed out earlier this week and emailed.
Great, thank you. And for this one as well, if we could, if we could send this out, you know, when we have it, maybe you can send it out to the council, even not in line with a meeting, because the 18th is, this plan, this is going to come up, and I'm not sure we can meet that deadline for local control, this agenda item.
As soon as the resolution is signed by the mayor, I'll put it in the mail and send it via email.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I would suggest if our attorney can add that whereas clause now, we could vote on it probably. I think this, this will be one of the things that we can, we can draft at a council meeting rather than later.
Right, so if I can put some words in your mouth, mouth, Mayor Potem, you're making a motion to amend, to add the whereas regarding fire danger and earthquake. We'll leave that to the discretion of the city attorney and the mayor, who gets to sign the resolution for the specific language on those topics, but we understand your intent. And then we can, with that amendment, vote on the resolution if we have a motion regarding the amendment. I guess we should vote on the amendment and the resolution simultaneously or separately, Sergio. And first, Mr. Mekachak has his hand up.
Oh, I was going to either make that motion or second that motion if you had made it, Mayor Lufo.
All right, so Mr. Rudin, should we have a separate vote on the amendment first, or can we do this all wrapped in one? All right, so Mr. Rudin, should we have a separate vote on the amendment first or can we do this all wrapped in one? And you're on mute. I mean, you may not be on mute, but we're not hearing you.
Can you hear me now? Yes. Oh, okay, my microphone was not quite plugged in. Okay, um, I think that you can vote on it at once. I do have some suggested language that you can include as a whereas possibly after the third whereas, whereas the city of Montesereno is in a designated wild and urban interface and faces fire and other natural hazards such as earthquake that should be addressed in land use decisions. And the city council of the city of Montesereno is in the best position best position to determine appropriate land use policies to address such risks.
All right, I move to amend as read by the city attorney and then to take vote on this. So do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, please. Lawler had her hand up first.
If I can clarify, I don't know if I heard the word fire in there. I heard earthquake, but.
You heard, you heard about the wooey, the woodland urban interface. That was a reference to fire and then fire followed after that.
Okay, good. Yeah, because you have to have fire and brimstone here.
Okay, so I just want to confirm the motion was from Mayor Luthold, but the second from councilmember Lawler, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Councilmember Mechacheck?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Alahi?
Yes.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
That motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you. All right, moving now to the second matter on our unfinished business. This is a discussion and direction regarding the fence ordinance ad hoc committee recommendations. And I believe we have a report and I believe that Mr. Mechacheck is going to speak to this. Mr. Leonardi, is that correct?
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief introduction, the Montesereno Fence Ad Hoc Committee met in early February. The committee prepared recommendations for review of the entire Montesereno City Council. The recommendations and language are located in attachment 1 to the report. And as you mentioned, Mr. Mechacheck, part of the ad hoc committee has agreed to present the reports findings to the council this evening. And we are available for questions as always.
Okay, great. Councilmember Mechacheck?
Thank you. So we're gonna just walk through the couple of brief slides that we have here. And before I get going, I would like to say that councilmember Lawler and I met in person and we went for a walk through the eastern part of the city of Montesereno and we observed a number of fences. And I had, we had a measuring tape with us and we measured a number of fences. So we looked at this fairly thoroughly and then we had a discussion on it. And this is an overview of what we are recommending to city council. So we basically say that if a fence is up to six feet tall. Oh, let me start off by identifying the notes at the bottom. This does not include masonry fences or walls. And we're measuring the fence height from the lowest point of the bottom rail to the tallest point, including posts and lattices as measured from the privacy side of the fence. Okay, because sometimes you've got a, you've got a slope, so it would be on the privacy side of the fence. So up to six feet, no review by site and architecture, no building permit is required. If it's a six foot tall solid fence, and we're using the word solid being that it's, you can't see through it. It doesn't have open, but it could be open as well. It's solid or open, but a six foot solid fence with one foot of lattice, seven feet maximum height. We're saying anywhere in the city of Montesereno, no site and architectural review, no building permit required. If it's up to seven feet with, without a lattice at the top, so using the term a solid fence. Site and architectural commission would have to review it. And there would not be a building permit required. And I'll also say that the building permit is not by ordinance. We're just including that for information. So if you want a fence, any fence over 17 feet tall and up to a maximum of eight feet either with or without lattice, you need a site and architectural review and you'll need a building permit. And you have to get the site and architectural commission approval before you apply for a building permit. Councilmember Lawler, is this accurate to our discussion?
Yes.
Okay, next slide, please. So here's the, what we call the six foot solid wood fence. And again, this does not include masonry fences or walls. Oh, and the third bullet point on the right says, subject to corner and side restrictions. We're not making any changes to that. So sorry, I've got a camera. Next slide, please. So here you've got the six foot solid fence with one foot of lattice. And this can be anywhere in the city of Montesereno. Next slide, please. This fence, because it's what we're terming a solid wood fence. It would require site and architectural commission review, but it would not require a building permit. Next slide, please. Here, any fence over seven feet tall to a maximum of eight feet tall would have to require site and architectural commission review and a building permit. Next slide, please. So if you were applying to the site and architectural commission for an exception, you would have to have at least one of these exceptions so that you've got a reason for.
Mr. Mechacheck, you muted yourself. We wanted to hear all of the action.
Oh, I hope he's okay.
I, I'm sorry. So you've got to have a justification for an exception. And here we listed a number of what those exceptions could be. Okay, next slide, please. As part of an application, you'd have to have some landscape, landscaping screening plans so that it shows that the over time, as your plants grow, that the height of the fence wouldn't become an issue, it would be, it would be less, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a wall. So, and then the other point, the site and architectural commission could identify other conditions as a requirement of approval. Next slide, please. So the findings have to be that it fits with the neighborhood and it's not going to be create a safety hazard. And the third bullet point says that constructed materials that are high quality exhibit superior craftsmanship and that are durable. So one of those points in there would be that, you know, you're not going to use something that is highly flammable in a wildlife interface area, you know, and this would be based on each location. Next slide, please. So this is the detail on what would be required in the application. And the fee would be $500. We've already got that set up in a, in our master fee schedule. And the notices would be mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the applicant's property. So everyone would be noticed on this as it is today. Next slide, please. Here is an example, a couple photos that I took of showing the importance of screening. And this is what I think is a very nice fence in the town of Los Gatos. And shortly after it was, it was completed, they put the plants in there and then just last month, I took a couple other photos and you can see how the screening plants have really helped diminish the perceived height of the fence. And I think that's, oh, one more slide, please. So the decision before council is to send this to the site and architectural commission for their review. Obviously, staff would do some, some work with site and architectural commission so that we've got more detail, it's more robust. But the framework is there. So today is the second, it could go to site and architecture or on the 7th of April and come back to council or a public hearing on the 20th of April. Then the second reading could be on the 4th of May. And I think our strategic planning meeting is somewhere around there. Steve, I think you mentioned that. And then if it was approved on the consent calendar on the 4th of May, it would take effect 30 days later, which would be the 30th of June. So this kind of lays out the process, but it's still a three-month process. And I believe that's the last slide. Is that correct? There we go.
And I'd like to add, if I may, first of all, it was great working with councilmember Mechacheck on this. He really listened to my concerns and I listened to his and this is our finished product. And what I'm particularly happy about is that it provides a mechanism for reasonable design control so that we maintain the look and feel of our beautiful city. There are a couple of, one housekeeping item that we can address in the, after oral communications.
Great, thank you. So before we open this for public comment and then come back for a formal discussion, any questions to direct to the members of the ad hoc committee? Councilmember Alahi, you've got your hand up and then we'll go to councilmember Turner afterward.
Yeah, thank you for the report and the very thorough job you guys have done on it. There was, their footnotes about masonry is not part of this. So what is our ordinance on having masonry walls or cement walls or concrete walls? And I assume this is all fencing that's going on the side and not on the front. I mean, the requirements to front are different. Thank, thank you.
Yes.
If I may, that was one of the housekeeping items I wanted to talk about. I think the masonry, we just need to make it clear that, that these fence heights require, are applied to all fences. But I think the masonry piece comes in where you can't add a lattice to a six foot masonry wall. So we do need to clarify that fence heights, it's all six feet is allowed. Anything above six feet may or may not require site and architecture approval. So I think that's just something we need to clarify. That's a good, good point you raised.
Yes, Councilmember Turner, you had questions?
Oh, and this has nothing to do with the three foot front, the front fences. This is only for side and back.
Okay, that was part of my question, but I have another question. Many cities use the 2018 International Fire Code when they're talking about fences. Is that part of, of the study that we've done in the past? Do you know, city manager Leonardi's? I'm concerned about, when we were taking our CERT class, one of the things that the firemen have said was that the problem with many cities is that their fences are way too high. And when there's a fire in one building, in one house, they cannot jump over the fence to save the other house. So I want to make sure that we look at that. Now, there's a 2018 International Fire Code that many cities adhere to, and I don't know if that's part of Montesereno as well.
I will address that, Councilmember Turner. I recall you raising the fire department as an issue. And I actually met with our fire chief for Santa Clara County. And we discussed this and I asked him, is an eight foot fence acceptable? Does it, does it hinder firefighters? And he said, no, it does not. And he pointed out that the jurisdictions that are covered by Santa Clara County Fire Department include the county and other municipalities that some of which have eight foot fence regulations, allow eight foot fences. And he said it is not a problem. I also spoke with Police Chief De Sina. And I met with him outside on a street and he said that that crooks are full of adrenaline and if they're chased, being chased, a six foot fence, a seven foot fence, an eight foot fence, they're going to go over it, no problem. And, but he did point out, so that was not an issue for him. They don't provide, a higher fence isn't safer per se. But he did point out something very interesting. He said, you know, when you're dealing with the neighborhood watching and that sort of thing, if you've got a six foot fence, someone can be walking along and you know, the taller, the taller crooks can kind of see over those fences. But a seven foot fence is very difficult to see over if you're trying to understand what's in, what's in the backyard or whatever. Is there something that would attract a thief? And he said an eight foot fence is impossible. And he said, you know, your neighborhood watch people will be able to see someone that's looking over fences if they're seven feet tall or eight feet tall. He said, but, but it's very difficult to see someone casually looking over a six foot fence. My son, for example, is six foot four and he can see over a six foot fence, no problem. I just wanted to let you know, Councilmember Turner, that those concerns that you had were addressed by the ad hoc committee.
Can you document that, please? In, in, in your, in your report here? Because I don't see anything that says that you, you did talk to the fire department and the police department. So that would be helpful for many of our residents to know.
Yes, I can do that.
On the question of the, the fire code, the city is required by state law to adopt and implement the 2019 California Fire Code. That is based substantially in part on the 2018 International Fire Code, which you referenced, councilmember. So the city has, you know, basically the bulk of those requirements addressed. I'm not aware that there's any specific fence regulation in the California Fire Code or the International Fire Code in terms of height. Those are all part of the Building Standards Code, which collectively does have a permit requirement for building of fence heights over seven feet.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Otherwise, we will open this up for public comment and move to that phase. So seeing no other council member questions at this time, let's go ahead and open public comment. If you are a member of the public wishing to speak on this subject, please raise your hand and we will begin with Mike McNeely. McNally.
Hello, yes, it's McNally with a short E. So hi, I'm, I'm mostly concerned about front yard fences and I am intending to attend the meeting that's going on tomorrow night about a front yard fence on Blanchard Drive. But watching this was fascinating. First of all, I'm a little bit terrified. But watching this was fascinating. First of all, I'm a little bit terrified that presentation for a long time did not say that we're talking about public facing or front or backyard. And later, there were some clarification that said, oh, no, this is only for backyard. I'd like a little more clarification. What about corner lots? And what about, you know, side yards and corner lots? There's a lot of places where, you know, these changes will really affect things. In general, by the way, I should note, I don't want to have rules about what people can do with their fences, especially between neighbors. I'm not that kind of person. People should make their own fence. Okay. Anyway, I, I would also like to see in the presentation, it was like, here's the suggestions. I wanted to know what the current standards were. That wasn't listed. Is this, are we keeping up the same thing? Is this a new limit? You know what? It was mystifying to watch the presentation to know about that. Let me think, I, I made notes as you spoke. Let's see, blah, 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 blah. What's, what's next? Oh, you also didn't mention a chain link and lattice chain link fences. I have those in my backyard and they're quite tall, and I wonder if there are rules about those, if that should be included. You know, your city bureaucrats doing a tough job. And I know you have to be thorough in your rules. You should probably think about including that. I also wanted to notice, it's a, I wanted to ask you, it's a $500 fee tax just to apply to build a fence, even if you're within the limits. That's something that also is not clear. It seems like if you're within the limits, you should be able to build a fence without an application. And that you only have to apply if you're going above and beyond the rules. I don't know why there's an application fee for building something that's perfectly legal. And, and then, yeah, I'm also wondering why that there's suddenly this desire for new changes involved. And it could be that I'm sensitive because again, the, the people on our street are suddenly trying to build a six-foot stone gargantuan fence on the front, front yard, you know, right on our street. And so I'm suspicious now, like, why are suddenly there changes coming through? That'd be something nice to know. It's probably something very simple that I just don't know about. Let's see. Oh, and the, the last thing is, in my last 12 seconds, the exception notice that we received for the, the meeting on Wednesday was extremely subtle on our street of 30 people, 50 people. We were the only one that noticed it. So if that could change, that'd be great.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Stephen White. We will recognize you and get you queued up here in just a moment.
Thank you, Mayor Luthold and councilmembers. As you may know, I am chairperson of the Site and Architecture Committee. And I look forward to hearing from Mr. McNally tomorrow night regarding the Blanchard project that I think he's talking about. We had a fence ordinance before us at the Site and Architecture Commission last year that was so convoluted that I was the lone commissioner to vote against it because there were more exceptions to the rule than there was a rule. It's kind of like trying to teach superlative conjugation to somebody. But I really appreciate councilmember Lawler and councilmember Mekachuk's effort to make this very simple and to provide discretion in the eyes of the Site and Architecture Committee regarding exceptions. And so I support what exists now on, on paper, at least in concept, and look forward to reviewing the ordinance and supporting it on behalf of the Site and Architecture Commission. So thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much. Any other members of the public, public wishing to speak tonight on this issue? Go ahead and raise your hands. If none, seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comment and return this now for councilmember discussion. Anyone wishing to be heard? Yes, councilmember Lawler.
Thanks. Yes, I think as our speaker had said, and thank you both for, for, for speaking up. I'm, I'm very happy to have site and architecture support on this. I do feel that we do need to have some clarification regarding masonry walls. And really, the idea of this is, is that any fence over six feet may or may not require site and architecture approval. And, and we probably, as we give it maybe to site and architecture, they could suss out a little bit more regarding clarification on wood, chain link, masonry. So we can talk about that here. We can basically clarify what we can. That's obviously very important. Thanks.
Great, thank you. And Mayor Potam Alahi.
Yeah, thank you. I, I know you guys have done a lot of work. I would like our citizens to be able to, you know, build fences with the few, fewest possible requirements of getting permits. And we're talking about side fences, we're talking about front fences or others that are blocking the view. And if a six-foot fence doesn't really give you the privacy that a seven-foot would, I would suggest let's either cut the, let's down to half a feet and make it six and a half, half a feet above that. Or just make it a lower seven-foot fence without any permitting or site and architecture requirements. Because a lot of cities, I think, are going to seven foot and there is, it's just an extra $500 that, you know, which is what have to pay. So my thought would be just to let people build seven-foot fences on the sides.
Well, yeah, to be clear, you can have a six-foot fence with a seven, with an additional one-foot lattice with, with no, no approval necessary. This is only if you were to build something larger that's solid. And it's really just designed, I think the only permits are allowed for something over seven feet. So it's really more just, again, it's design control, just making sure that it fits with the neighborhood. It's just, it's, it's just an easy step. It's not, it's not cumbersome. And so this is just a way to preserve our community.
And I, I got that and I understood the reason for it. I, I just think that if you're trying to get privacy and it's a six-foot fence, it doesn't do it. A lattice on top will not give you any privacy. So just keep it.
Yeah, and I think this is, this is guidance. This is going to site and architecture for their input next and, and for public input. This was really the ad hoc committee reporting back on their findings and looking for whether or not they've got a nod from us or as, as this moves to the next phase of site and architecture, getting more public input. And then coming back, even after that, coming back to the council for, for final changes and clarification. So I think we're at the beginning of this process as opposed to the end. So those are my thoughts on that initially. Any other councilmember comments? Looks like seeing none. Yeah, I wanted to, to add that I think this is, this is clear. And I certainly understand both points, both councilmember Lawler's idea that the look and feel of Monte Sereno really also incorporates friendliness and respect towards your neighbors as opposed to walling off. And when we brought this up before and talked about it, the idea of the seven-foot fence, by right, no review whatsoever between anybody who wants it, really means that a neighbor could be kind of throwing that fence up without any discussion with their neighbor. Whereas a six-foot fits with a lattice is something that we're familiar with. It's not nearly as imposing. And so I certainly understand the, the request for simplicity that, that Mayor Potam Alahi is bringing up. And yet, the, the respect that it shows the neighbors to say, you know, if we're going to deviate from these very traditional designs, it needs to be reviewed. And that's where site and architecture comes in. For the public, we don't have a lot of the public here tonight, but I think we want to make it clear the $500 is not a tax and it's not the city trying to make money off of this. It's, it's actually the city recovering the cost of sending out the postcards, making sure the neighbors around you are aware and getting that input so that we are all good neighbors to each other. And so that hopefully those, those postcards get out and the notices get out. And, and they do provide real notice because yes, sometimes they, they don't get picked up by people. They don't get understood by people. We've had the same thing happen here on, on very important issues where one neighbor out of 50 notices and goes and knocks on a neighbor's door. And pretty soon, everybody says, wait a minute, how come we didn't notice? Well, the city's trying to do its job, but we need to get those notices out. We need to let people know what's going on and, and what their need to participate and what those deadlines are. So yeah, councilmember Alahi.
Yeah, I, I, I think this is a great process that we've set up for getting the citizens' comments and moving this, this forward. I think the ad hoc committee has done a great job putting it together. And we look forward with what, what comes out of the site and architecture because that's where the citizens will give their input. And I think that's what we need to respect once it comes out of there. Thank you.
Great. So do we have a motion to, to push this forward with the ad hoc committee's recommendations and send it on to site and architecture? Michelle, did you get that?
I'll second. Okay, got the first from Mayor Potam Alahi with the second from councilmember Lawler.
Yep.
Okay, councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Councilmember Mekachuk.
Hi.
Councilmember Turner.
Yes.
Mayor Potam Alahi.
Yes.
Mayor Luthold.
Yes.
The motion passes five zero.
Great, thank you very much. All right, turning next to new business. We have the issue of accepting the 2020 annual housing element progress report and direction to staff, if we so accept, to file the report with the state of California by April 1st, 2021. Mr. Leonardi, are you going to introduce that? And do we have someone reporting on that tonight?
I believe Ms. Hamilton is on the line this evening.
Right, if we can make sure Ms. Hamilton is recognized to give us our presentation on this.
Hi, I am here.
There you are.
Can you hear me? I'm going to be very honest. I believe this was going March, at the next council meeting, so I do not have my stuff here. However, the staff report, like I said, is very straightforward. Let me bring it up on my computer here. Let's see. And fortunately, I did attend a webinar today hosted by Aberg and with staff from the, from HCD so that I could ensure that I was filling out the annual report spreadsheets correctly. And I was pleased to find out that I was because they've changed it over the past two years. They're much more complicated. But again, you know, as we've done in the past years since I've been here, you know, basically summarized what efforts we've accomplished in providing the housing from the previous Reno numbers. And you can see that on the tables. And I think as far as our general plan, goals and policies, again, we, we enumerate that in one of the tables of the annual report. Our biggest accomplishment has been happening over the past couple of years with the Mantalba Oaks project. Although that's not related to affordable housing, that is related to programs to show that we have a range of housing. So this housing element reporting isn't just necessarily the affordability aspect of it, but our whole housing element, which covers the broad range of housing goals and policies. I think as far as the numbers are, you know, it, I, I talk about it in the analysis part. You know, we've permitted some ADUs. I think with the changing regulations, we're seeing more applications in. And those are, you know, you'll kind of see up and down, you'll see applications. And then it takes anywhere from maybe six to 12 months of construction. So then, well, we might see them actually finalized the following year. So this whole new process with HCD is intended for them to follow the whole application to inspection to final so that they can kind of watch also how the city is performing relative to their permitting and, and streamlining and, and working to get these housing units built and online. So with that, I am available for questions. Unfortunately, the tables aren't coming up on my computer that well, but I can try and explain them more to you. Table A really just shows applications. And last year, we didn't have any discretionary applications for new single-family homes. The applications you're seeing on table A are predominantly the ADUs because those are just a building permit. And then table A2 is where you're seeing the single-family detached homes come into play. And you, you see all the ones from Mantalba Oaks. And so you, you kind of got to take your time to work through these to see which ones are the applications, the one we permitted the unit, and then we, when we final, when we finalized it. So, so it's a lot of, a lot of numbers, a lot of dates. But, you know, we're, and if you look at the last, is it table B? I think it is. Let me see, let me pull up the next one, table B. All right, this table isn't. Yeah, it's not, I apologize. I can't bring it up on my computer. But that shows you how we have, you know, gone far above the above moderate numbers and, you know, where we are relative to the other Reno numbers.
Great, thank you. Any questions by councilmembers before we open public comment? So Mayor Potam Alahi.
Thank you for the report, but I think I'm having as much problem as you are. I don't see any tables. I think I see a table A2 partly. I don't see a table B. And then I have a, the hard copies that were kindly dropped off have just spreadsheet lines, which we can't read anything. I know you used, I, I know you used to present them. The last time I looked at it, where you showed what was required in each category and what was accomplished. So I, I assume you've done that, but we, we're just not getting it.
I have. And if you look at the staff report, it does indicate March 16th. So I'm going to, I'm going to really put it out there and say, I really think if, if the council is amenable to it, I will be prepared, this staff report was prepared to come to you March 16th because that's plenty of time for us to then forward it on to HCD April 1st.
That sounds good.
So I, you know, my deepest apologies, I'm, I'm sitting here and I, I was not prepared to talk with you on it because I had prepared this for March 16th, as is the date on the staff report. And knowing that the tables aren't coming up, that gives us two weeks to make sure that if it, if it doesn't present well digitally, we will make sure you have the hard copies in hand. Because that was one of the issues with HCD today. People were complaining that it's hard to present these tables to their councils. So I can make sure that you guys have hard copies or we can create PDFs or something.
Great, thank you. Actually, yeah, that's good. I noticed that for me, at least with a very large monitor, this was opening up and I was able to see the table A. But then the staff report showed up at about 9%. And I think that's something that we're just going to have to constantly adjust for. I actually like the digital copies if we are able to, to get them all. So, but I understand other people may not have that kind of screen space and computers that are downloading in the same operating system. So, yeah, if we could get a look at that, I, I would suggest if, if we really want to talk about this, we could bring it back on the, on the regular calendar, of course, under a unfinished business. But it may be something that if you're comfortable that the staff report is clear and people can ask their questions when the agenda comes out, this may be something that we can deal with simply on the consent calendar. So we might try placing it there next week, next meeting and then pulling it. So we might try placing it there next week, next meeting, and then pulling it for further discussion if council members have additional comments, if that's appropriate from a the perspective of the city attorney that we could bring it back on consent calendar.
Yeah, I we can absolutely put it on the consent calendar. There is no requirement to have public hearing on this item that I'm aware of. I think the only issue is we want to make sure that the tables are presentable to the council and to the public, so everybody knows what's being submitted, and that's it.
Perfect. And then we'll pull it if necessary, but I would suggest we're probably gonna have a busy meeting next time. So if council members can, once the agenda and tables are posted, approach staff, see if you can get the answers you need, then we can see if we can be efficient in getting this process. So with that, I guess we will pull this item and we will see it again at the next meeting. And thank you, Ms. Hamilton, for your work on this. I I think it actually looks really clear, and I'm glad to hear that you're you confirmed that you're getting these entered correctly because it is a complicated table, but it's giving a lot of good information.
Thank you.
But thank you. Okay, so turning to number two on the new business calendar, this is discussion and direction regarding the Monte Sereno KCAT history project. And Mr. Leonartis, you have a report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Monte Sereno KCAT history project will provide a platform to document Monte Sereno history through local TV programming in conjunction with community partner KCAT. The objective is to document the history of Monte Sereno through narratives and interviews of or with Monte Sereno residents, local historians, and members of our surrounding communities. The program will programming will be added. Excuse me, the programming will be recorded and aired on local TV via KCAT on cable, website, and YouTube media platforms. Links to Monte Sereno's city website in the history section will also connect to the programming. And during our strategic goals last year, we had the strategic goal of quality public service, and under the subheading, we had community engagement, and this would meet one of the council's goals to get the community to participate in a fun project for the city as well as preserve the rich history of Monte Sereno. And I'm not sure if Melissa Torren is on the line with us this evening, but she might like to add to the presentation if she is around. Melissa Torren is from KCAT.
She is online and she is now in the process of being promoted. So Ms. Turner, I think you're available and can go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, hi, Council. This is a very exciting project. So I hope you're as as excited as we are. I think we've identified a lot of people who have a lot to say, a lot of stories to share about the history of Monte Sereno. And we look forward to capturing it in a way either by episode or we haven't quite decided that part of it yet, but I'm sure we're going to hear from a lot of people, and we have host Lisa Chrysler on board with this, which is very exciting. And we also have stories that happened in Monte Sereno that we want to dive in in depth to tell about these stories, like the Billy Jones Railroad, and you can see on my my report that I some of the people that we're looking at. So do I do you have any questions or comments or what you would like to see?
Yeah, thank you. Why don't you stay active to answer any council questions? And Mr. Leonartis as well, before we open to public comment, do we have general questions from the council?
Mayor Protamilahe. Yeah, I thank you for doing this. I think KCAT is doing a great service to the community, not just Monte Sereno, but Los Angeles and other areas also. And we also have your name in our emergency operation manual where you you will be guiding the citizens if something happens. Hopefully, nothing will. I I understand you do use a lot of program youth are involved with the programming, and I think this may be another thing where it would be helpful to the youth of our areas to participate. And I see you have a list of people that you that would be good candidates to interview. There are, there's quite quite a lot of, and also you you've said you've been interviewing residents. There are a lot of residents who are still living and they're getting on to where they're in the nineties or a hundred, so it may be a good idea to see you can talk to some of them, and if you can off call off talk offline, I can give you the name of at least one of them that may be good candidate for discussion, but there's a lot of history that's in the hearts of a lot of our residents. So this is a great project you're doing, so wishing you the best on it.
That would be wonderful. I'm going to reach out to you tomorrow to see if we could collaborate on people and get a names and email addresses. So I have reached out to somebody already. She's a hundred. I think her name is Marian Galt.
Great.
So I haven't heard back from her yet, but I hope to have her on. So I agree with you to reach out to the ninety and hundred-year-olds first.
That's real history there. Thank you.
Yes.
Great, anyone else?
Mayor, if I could add one comment, and I asked Ms. Torren about this. There were interviews done last year with some of our council members about the pandemic and the it was the community storytelling segment. And because the pandemic has been continuing, and now the response is starting to take place, they're continuing to add to that programming. So the previous project that some council members were interviewed for by KCAT is still in production, and I believe Ms. Torren said it will be released this fall. So just wanted to follow up with that answer to that inquiry.
Yes, yes. And so of all of your great interviews, we thought this would wrap up in two thousand twenty. But then the BLM marches came, and we thought that was important to include. Then the wildfires came, and then COVID continued, and now the vaccines. So we want to capture the reopening of our town as a happy occasion, but we still have your great interviews.
Great, thank you. And Councilmember Mekachak?
Thank you. I was going to say that I've got I did some research into the history of the Billy Jones Railway, and I have some old photographs, aerial photographs from, I think, nineteen fifty four.
Great.
And I I could contribute some items there.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Great, that sounds good. So, yeah, so let's go ahead and open this to any public comment at this point, and then we'll come back to some more council member discussion. So if we have any members of the public wishing to be heard on this issue, please feel free to raise a hand. Seeing none, I'll note that we do have a member of the public here, Ms. Philippa Alvis. We didn't I didn't embarrass her into raising a hand to talk about this project, but she is a wonderful person and certainly can tell stories about the city of Monte Sereno, her knowledge about the Blanchard subdivision and life over there. Good, I got her to bring her hand up. So let's recognize Ms. Alvis. We'll get you off of mute in a second, and then we'll be ready to hear from you. So if you can unmute yourself, if you have the mute button. Sounds like we're having some technical difficulties on the audio with you, Ms. Alvis. If you can bang your microphone a couple of times and start again. No, still having mic, still having microphone, microphone difficulties. Yeah. Sorry, Ms. Alvis, looks like still having microphone problems.
Mayor, if Ms. Alvis would like to submit her comments in writing via email to me, I'd be happy to present them to the council and also to Ms. Torren. And we would love her participation in the project.
Yeah, that would be great. And so thank you, Philippa, for speaking up and or trying to. But yes, please. Please email and look for, no, still not working. So we look forward to your participation and in the project and information and ideas you have about who to talk to in addition as well. So if you can please let Mr. Leonartis or one of your council members know, we'll be sure to pass this along to Ms. Turner. So thank you. All right, so let's close public comment for now, seeing no more hands, and return this to council member discussion regarding a decision on this matter. Okay, Ms. Lawler.
Well, I think this is a fantastic project. This definitely folds right into our sense of community and our one of our strategic goals in terms of community engagement. This is exciting. I'm all for it.
Great.
Yeah, I I agree. I think I I would move to, I I think there's a request for a ten thousand dollar grant on this. Is that correct? That we need to approve today?
That is correct. That is the initial estimate, and that is to produce somewhere from eight to ten programs.
So I would I would approve to move, I would move to approve that request.
Yeah, I guess I wanted to to really second your comment earlier about getting youth involved and and really underline, we've got the Monte Monte Sereno Youth Commission members, who are a wonderful energetic group of young people, and then KCAT works closely with Los Angeles high school students. But as I look at the living history idea, I really love the idea of getting youth and our older population in touch with each other. So I would hope that KCAT will look for every opportunity to to do that, even even potentially having young people do some of the interviews, if that's appropriate, and if not, at least some of the production work or setup and staging and lighting and anything that young people can help with on this project, I think would be especially valuable. And also, I did want to suggest, I think you have a great list of of people and ideas, and I think the public can help us expand on that. I would like to see us go beyond the the list of obvious people, maybe not in this first round, but maybe in a later round. I think that we have a lot of people who fly a little bit under the radar, who founded companies or who were there with the early tech companies and artists and others who are in our community that we can really reach out to. I know that when I have knocked on doors originally running for council, I met a lot of very interesting people who I didn't know were in our community, and I think everyone on council has had that experience. So I'd love to see this expand as well. So with that, I would go ahead and formally place the second on Mayor Protamilahe's motion there and take a vote on this.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mekachak?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Mayor Protamilahe?
Yes.
Mayor Luthold?
Yes.
This is five zero.
Great, thank you. Okay, turning next to council member comments. Do we have council member comments or committee and commission reports? Councilmember Turner, I saw your hand first.
Yes, I I I just wanted to let the council know that there is a United Neighbors Meeting that's gonna happen March the sixth from five to seven, and it's about the impact of SB nine and SB ten. I I would urge you to see it. They've created some very beautiful slides that will show you how the neighborhood will actually change in in the coming years. So I will, I I think I posted it on Nextdoor, but I can send you the link as well. So please attend it. It's it's March sixth from five to seven, and the host will be Lydia Koop, who is the city council member of Palo Alto.
All right, thank you. Any other committee, commission reports, comments?
The yes, yeah, last 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 meeting, we had a discussion on the situation in Texas and the involvement of PG&E and clean energy individuals. I think a city manager has taken the initiative and contacted Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and we hope to get a presentation from them in the next in in the next couple of weeks, or the next couple of meetings.
All right, great. And any other council member reports, comments? Doesn't look like so. We will move now to the city manager's report, Mr. Leonartis.
Thank you, Mayor Luthold. We, with the request of the city clerk, Ms. Radcliffe, need to get your iPads back. This is the first meeting tonight. We are using our iCompass software application, and we would like to get the iPads back from you so we can get those updated. So if you could bring those to City Hall, or I could pick them up from your homes, we can make arrangements, please. I will send you an email reminder, and we can establish a way to get those collected. And I just wanted to announce some happy news regarding the pandemic. We are moving back into the red tier in Santa Clara County. Now, what this gets us is twenty-five percent capacity or a hundred people, whichever is fewer in restaurants. So we get to go back to indoor dining, retail stores, maximum of fifty percent capacity, gyms and fitness centers, maximum of ten percent capacity, movie theaters, twenty-five percent capacity or a hundred people, whichever is fewer, zoos, museums, and aquariums at twenty-five percent capacity. Those are some of the main main things. Oh, mandatory directive on travel will no longer be in effect. So some good news regarding the pandemic, and of course, it comes with some reminders. Stay outdoors as much as possible, stay masked, stay six feet distance from others, avoid crowds when you can, get vaccinated when it's your turn. So we look forward to more good news and more coming back to normal in the future. Keep up the good work. That's my report.
Councilmember Turner, again, sign your hand first.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Radcliffe and our city manager for iCompass. I think they they've done a good job is the seamless implementation. So thank you so much.
Great, and Councilmember Lawler?
I will ditto that, and I also want to just say that all of the vaccines are highly effective and that our residents should not be concerned about what vaccine they get. They are all extremely good and just get whatever vaccine you can. And that's my PA for the day.
Great, thank you. All right, then, let's open up officially. We have future agenda items. Anyone want to talk about anything, getting anything particular on the agenda in the near future? All right, seeing none, obviously, anyone can reach out to the city manager at any time or within Brown Act restrictions, reach out to me, and procedurally, we can always talk about making sure that things get on the appropriate agendas when they come up. But if we need council member discussion, we'll keep this as ongoing agenda item. So without further ado, we will adjourn the March second meeting. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.